A meeting to order for Thursday, February twenty second. I have all three segments present, the town administration present, recording for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Leo Martell. Thank you Leo as always. Okay gentlemen.
For the meeting minutes?
Yes, for the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty four as amended.
I'll second those. Okay, discussion, those gentlemen? Bill along. Do you have any not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave. I'll make a motion to approve the nine twenty four P M non-public meeting minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second Justice's motion, those don't need to be sealed.
That is correct, no sealing on those. Any further discussion on those? Do you have any not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the non-public ten oh two meeting minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty four to be approved.
I'll second those. Again, not to be sealed and any discussion on those?
Nope.
Do you have any not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dave.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna put up a public comment. First, I'll start with the back row. Any back row public comment? Public comment again? Nope. Middle row, no public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and continue on with the agenda. Okay, today, today is the day we do a twenty twenty three town report dedication. And we, this year, we dedicating this town report to Donna Dunn. I like her marriage because she's very impressive. I love her.
Robert.
Donna Dunn and Andy, her husband, who got her here on a quiet note. Husband thirty one years, designed and built her forever home on top of a hill overlooking Gorham Pond, Croydon Mountain and Mount Mananok. You can see every time you go down that, that street there, you know, it's a beautiful home. Donna planted over ten thousand daffodils bulbs in her front yard, which has since become the Dunn Cottage, a major attraction each spring. The Dunbarton Garden Club, under Donna's leadership, planted over one hundred thousand daffodil bulbs along the roads in Dunbar over a ten year period to beautify the town and honor the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of its founding. The project she initiated has since been adopted by all, by all the other towns along the John Stark Seneca Highway, by, from Ware through Hopington, New Boston, and many other communities throughout the New England based on the Dunbar model and her advice. Donna's volunteer efforts in Dunbar began as an apprentice to Bud Noyes, the former town historian. She has carried on Bud's legacy by cataloging and recording his notes and documents, curating the Tucker Hadley Collection with Linda Landry, as well as preserving other town historic papers and, and many other items on display in the Dunbar Public Library. There's a corner in the public library which you can see all these great historical documents. And I think Leo, Leo, Leo and his brother helped put that room together for him. Okay. As a current town historian and chair of this historical awareness committee, Donna has overseen the placement of the plaques on historical homes throughout the town. With much help from Leo Martell and other committee members, the memories of a, of a number of town elders were recorded and linked on the town website. That was a great project. You can link on those, those, push the link and actually hear these interviews, which are, some of these people have made their way on to other ventures, but it's nice to have that. Okay, Donna has worked tirelessly with Bill Zeller, our school liaison, to educate Dunbar students about the town's colorful history by regularly publishing town tidbit sheets, leading, leading Dunbar in historic, history talks and organizing the annual store of town home gingerbread recreations. Donna, with a geo- technical, a geotechnical expert Fred Mullin, oversaw the placement of markers identifying the original location of all thirteen of Dunbar's nineteenth century one-room school houses. She and Fred have also headed the project to include Captain Shipio's Page burial site, commemorative stone, and a sign located in Page's Cemetery on the New Hampshire State Black Historical Trail map. Donna received an award from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for finding, renovating, and moving back to Dunbar, to Dunbarton our last early nineteenth century Sylvester Wilson cobbleshop, which she donated to the Dunbar Historical Society, which we pass on thirteen all the time. She could not have completed this project without the help of Dan Van Culkin, Leo Martell, Larry Camo, and many others. Donna partnered with Gail Martell to raise funds for and manage reconstruction and maintenance of the bandstand, not the gazebo, but the bandstand, with, on the town common, replicating the historical bandstand that burned down in nineteen forty-three. Donna and Gail, with the advice and help from Bob Boyden, Jen Van Bogart, also restored the town hearse and arranged for the construction of its hearse house and Page's Cemetery. If you had the opportunity to meet Donna and decide to learn about Dunbar history or to volunteer, she would be delighted to share her extensive knowledge of town history with you and welcomes any volunteers. Thank you, Dawn, for everything you've done for this community.
Fred and Lee Martell have done instrumental in the Sipio Page story since it's very interesting. I don't want to go without saying, Lee has been by the side the entire time.
They're shaking their heads, but the thing is.
Oh, yeah.
This is her night. I just do it.
Donna, I've had the fortune of working on several committees with you as a Dunbar's selectmen's rep, and I want to say that it's been a great honor working on those committees with you and learnt a lot working with you and seeing how much you've done for the town of Dunbar and, you know, going above and beyond. Some of us have been here a lot longer than you, but I don't think anybody's done more as far as trying to get all of this recorded for the town of Dunbar so that when we're not here, people will have chains to follow. And I know you're doing background information, day and night, and all of that, and that means a lot to all of us in Dunbar. I personally got asked by several people to make sure that, you know, you got into one of these town reports and, you know, we put you up against the best in town and you're here this year. And one thing, Lee came over and showed me this cover earlier this week, it's hot off the press, and, you know, I didn't like the flowers on the cover, but Lee had said to me, isn't this a perfect year to have this on the cover? And sure enough, it is. You know, when we approved this cover, I hadn't even thought of that, but when now that you've got you there, it really.
It's a perfect match for the person we dedicated it to.
And the garden club is doing a twentieth anniversary repeat this year on daffodils for Dunbar. It's, it's perfect.
It'll be a great year to have this up there and, you know, normally we have a fire truck or a building or something, but we got your daffodils on here this year.
And Sipio Page's daffodils right down there in the lower right corner.
There you go.
Yep. Sipio's flag. Sign me that.
Yep. I just want to say thank you for all you've done for the town. Much appreciated.
Been a lot of fun with a lot of different people.
Go ahead, Fred.
I wanted to say to Andy, thank you for, Andy and I did all the, the daffodils in front of the Page's Cemetery, but he came down with the worst case poison ivy I've ever seen.
A purse.
Yeah.
I wanted to thank Andy for giving up a portion of his house for all this research paperwork.
That is true. That is true. He lost a lot of space.
You can thank your husband when you're on your way home. You kept a good secret.
Okay. He did. I've been on pills and pillows, I don't know anything that's been going on.
We try to keep it on the QT, you know, we try to keep it a little surprised.
Well, I've been hiding my little face in the bed, my hospital bed, my chair, my handicap bath, and I don't go anywhere.
Well, she, she invited me several years back when I first got to know her, to her war room, I call it. And her war room is nothing but documents after documents, pages and, and files, and she's gone through, she goes through them.
And post-its.
And post-its, yeah.
Thousands of post-its.
So, I think it's, I salute you, I really do.
Thank you.
Do you want to present a signed copy of this report to you?
Oh, thank you very much.
Don't smudge them.
I won't.
It's gonna be worth money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, the thing is, we'd like to have you, if, if permissible, come to town meeting, and John Toradier, the town moderator, which is here, will recognize you at the town meeting in front of our, your fellow residents.
I will do my best to be there.
That's all we can ask.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody, I appreciate that. It's been fun.
We appreciate you, Donna.
I want to hold that chair, Andy.
I'm getting up. Lee told me to take you home.
Touche.
That chair swivels, Andy.
Take care. Thanks for coming down, thank you.
Back to your cave.
Congratulations, Donnie, you deserve it.
I got, you got a nice cover.
I was gonna say, none of us went to.
He said the same thing when he read the dedication, he says, oh!
The light, light goes off. Well, we were just bantering about the, on the, on, with the cover and we're like, like, okay, it's a nice cover, it's got some flowers on it.
I remember you guys going over.
And then, then I read the dedication, and as soon as I read the dedication, it's like the light bulb goes on and say, touche, Lee.
I remember one of you fellows said, who picked this?
But look at it this way, when it comes in everybody's mail, at first glance, people will think, oh, the new seed catalog.
Don't actually read it.
Yeah, not recycle, yeah.
Okay. Well, we're gonna continue on, go down with the agenda, is Mr. Jeff Crosby here? I'm gonna bypass him here.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, Lee, we have, we have to sign some copies here for you?
Correct. I'm required to post it in two public places by the twenty sixth, and we're close to that deadline, but we'll meet our deadline.
And we're talking about this?
The warrant and the budget and the MS six thirty six.
Dave, we're gonna give you some.
Two copies.
Start signing, and if you start signing, we'll just interchange it, move things along. John, the recommendation you made last week at the public hearing?
Yep.
We incorporated it, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that should do that page.
Four here.
You want to be tall?
This one? Justin's got the last one. Did Justin get that one?
Yes.
No. Fred?
Bye now, we'll buy.
That's okay, there's things you have to do, John, that's okay too. I'll listen in, I've been derelict to my attendance to the meeting. That was exciting.
Yes, everyone has their own packet.
Want to talk about that next? Okay, we're gonna talk about the next one, it'll be community power, default rate options. Anyone from the energy committee to talk about this?
I am.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
Dana sent this over to me. Community power, I'm not community power. The energy committee had a meeting, I specifically stayed offline, didn't go online, so this could be a true interpretation of the energy committee. They made their recommendation, they wanted to be as the, their suggestion to the selectmen from the energy committee, which would give thirty-three point four percent renewable, where twenty-three point four is mandated from the state. That would be about four cents over the minimum price, and they thought that would be a good default. Point four percent. They thought that would be a good default to start with at the town, and one thing is, you're gonna be able to pick any of the four when you get into your home. And that's what the majority of the towns are doing from what he's seen.
Kind of a problem that's starting to play in, the thing is, the voters will be informed that they can make their own decision, what works best for them.
Yeah, and it gives us a little bit extra renewable.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
And the, the thing that they're hoping is that that B rate is probably what the existing rate would be anyway. So you'd be getting ten percent more renewable for the same rate as every source that provided. The only difference is, when we talk with, in the event that the public service rate, shall I say, and it doesn't, it remains low, we can defer on executing a contract. Yeah, correct. Well, we want to do one small because I can get the best price.
Right, and probably for a good term.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on?
Nope.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on this?
No, I, I think we're good. You want to vote? I don't think we need to vote.
I think we'll hear from Dana for discussion about.
Okay, why don't we just make a motion that we accept option B as the default with the other four options.
This, this will be our selectmen's decision then?
Yes, going forward.
Yes, you guys are happy with that.
Yeah.
I know you would talk about going to the lowest rate.
Right, but the thing is, but it does, it's, the president's gonna be the ultimate power.
I'm good with it too.
Yeah. Okay.
So it does say here in the last line, for discussion and vote.
Yeah, okay.
Voting on.
I'd like to make a motion that B becomes a default option.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Do you have any not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done. John, come on down. I like you today, I like you a lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The thing is, Dave, Dave knew you some bad news tonight, though.
Does he?
There's another town in New Hampshire buying for the same vehicle.
The selectman from Arrow came in with me because they're going to buy a fire truck, guess where it is?
Um, in Hudson?
Yes.
At least got other ones.
Okay, okay.
So, Jim appeared today that we've been looking for, for a year. So, just by faith, J I was on Facebook last night.
Yep.
This truck popped up, exactly what we've been looking for. Price is good, fits in our station.
I didn't get to read, John, what are the miles and stuff?
Eighteen thousand miles.
It's on your notes.
Yeah, eighteen thousand, couple hundred pump miles, big Detroit diesel engine in it, heavier train pressure than we have in ours. This truck today, I talked to the salesman, if you bought, ordered that truck today, it's one point two million.
Ooh.
So, it's top of the line Pierce, it's like the Cadillac Mercedes. Very little used, some town, it was a surplus truck in some city or town, they decided to get rid of a couple of them. It's an oh eight, so, you know, sixteen years old, but we did a virtual warranty okay with it, every compartment underneath and everything, warranty, the little pump test, so letter it for us, put our lettering on it, one year warranty.
What are the cons?
Cons is.
It's at a company that does this.
Yeah, they buy trucks and.
And they're reframing.
They're not a broker.
Yeah.
They're a company that buys trucks and been around a long time for me, and I've heard them before. Uh, the tank, we want a thousand gallon tank, this is seven fifty, so two hundred fifty gallons less, but we can live with that.
What size tank do you have now?
We chase it with a three thousand gallon tanker, so he only ever use, run out of water, you know, unless you got a large structure fire or something, but you always connect the tank to it, so that's, and the other thing is, this truck never drafted water anywhere, which is a good thing, I mean dirt or anything to pump.
What does that mean?
They don't have any, there's no space to put suction hose on the truck.
So they're gonna suck out of the pond.
Never sucked out of it because they had a water system wherever there was. So there's no area on the truck to carry our suction hose, we carry three lengths of suction hose so we can draft from ponds, pour tanks, all that stuff. So there's no, this truck never had an on it. So that would have to be, something would have to be fabricated, I talked to the guy today, he's had his mechanics looking at it, there's, there's quite a few options. And the hose bed is so large, you could petition a piece off, put the hose in there. Some towns, this has a ladder rack on top, the ladder goes on top, like the one we have, then when it comes down, you have the space to put hose underneath that, so you could put a length there, put a length on the other side, so that's, you know, that's not the indoor. So those are the two issues that it doesn't have.
The, the price difference could easily accommodate any modification you gotta make.
Yeah, exactly. So, Buddy's going down tomorrow.
So this is actually a much better truck than the one we were gonna get?
Oh, yeah. Heavy duty bus cab and all, you know, it's got this heavy duty, Pierce uses this special front axle, front end nitto suspension, which is extremely expensive, these cities and towns that are behind them, you know, they have, it's got a bunch of Pierce's bulbs, and those towns got some. And this front axle was something they had designed for stability, anyways, it's got the, it's a T four. So anyways, it's got everything that we want, even more, it's got a draw generator on it, it's got a light, extending light on it for spotlight that comes out, it's got foam on it, it's got, I mean, everything, you couldn't ask for any more stuff on a truck, so.
Will it fit in your existing doors?
Existing doors.
Yep. It's nine feet, ten inches tall, thirty-three point four inches long or something, which is basically the same as our truck right now. But it's got these school bus mirrors on the front that hang out the front, which is still playing a role because of the distance between the truck and the overhead door. That's not included in the thirty-three feet, but it kind of looks kind of funny because it's the gal. But other than that, decked in everything, no pain issues, nothing.
How old tires now?
Oh, five. Well, the one we're getting rid of is a ninety-one.
Oh, wow, okay.
So that's thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four years old. So, you know, it's only five years newer than the one we got, but you're getting so much more truck for your money.
Yeah, as far as miles and, and engine hours, pump hours, is that, I have no, no way to compare that, is that low or high?
Very low.
Very low.
And a lot of trucks don't have pump hours on it, but these trucks do, they choose the on your speedometer because your speedometer turns when the truck pumps.
Okay.
So that adds mileage, so some of that eighteen thousand miles is actually pumping time. Even though they have the, well, you could subtract, I guess they have pumps, so you subtract the pump hours from the, well, that's hours, not mileage.
It does sound like they subtracted them.
Does it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyways, but when I called him this morning, he hadn't advertised it yet, the guy just threw it on Facebook last night, the salesman did. So when I called him, you know, I was the first one to call, he said, if you call an hour later, the truck will be sold. But he says, I have to put it on my Facebook, on the, on their website, my boss is making me put it on. I said, don't put it on, I said, you know, we'll, we'll probably buy it, I'll talk to my, it's like, no, I gotta put it on. And I said, okay, and put it on, he got like twenty-five calls today on this truck. So he called me back, he goes, I said, you know, I said, I'd really like to look at it, virtually, but he said, the truck will be sold tomorrow if you guys don't do something. So, he said, that's why, so I'll send you the contract, they want ten percent down, the rest on delivery, it'll take about forty-five days for them to go through the truck, they pump test it, they certify it, they change all the fluids, they do all that stuff.
You have to pick it up, or they deliver?
No, I think it said delivery on there, but he did find.
Add additional cost.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, so the actual cost.
Oh, okay, he said he would send me some delivery chart, you could go down and drive it home.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not an issue. Seven and a half hours to their location, so Buddy and one of my other guys are going down tomorrow. They were going Saturday, I was gonna take a check down, deposit on it, wanted to deposit by next week, and a con, signed contract. And I said, well, my guys are coming Saturday to look at it, and I says, we could do, bring it then. And he says, well, they really wanted more commitment than that, they wanted the contract signed like today. I said, I can't do it today. There's no way I could do that. I said, tonight I can meet with the selectmen, they agreed, you know, we could scan you something tomorrow, I could deliver it, but they're gonna leave so early, and I can't get a check.
You can get a check, I'll have it ready by eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Because if they approve it, I've got someone coming in too.
They want to be on the road early then, so seven and a half hours down there.
Eight thirty would be in close of business day, they're already gone from the.
Yeah, and he's got an appointment there in the afternoon. So, but everything we've seen and thought, I'm sure they're not gonna find any issue with the thing. Maybe a couple of little things that they're willing to fix, so I think it's a good deal, best deal we're gonna get.
What's in our fund now?
Four hundred.
Basically, you're gonna have money left over.
With this, with the seventy, it's three eighty with the seventy-five thousand.
Three sixty-four, we're not talking the seventy-five.
Right, if, if we pass the article of seventy-five to deposit into the CRFP, then it has four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I know, we're gonna exit article.
You're gonna put a hundred in though, right?
Right, seventy-five.
Make the, make five hundred.
Right, correct.
Right.
Correct.
So the five hundred deal is no longer there. The guy that quotas on the truck for four ninety, that truck's no longer available because that was in October, November, so that same truck is five twenty-six. So I priced another truck, that was from Rosenhaus Flower. Pierce quoted me two prices on what we're looking for, he's five, five forty and five sixty-five. So E one was the only company that hasn't officially sent me the bid, he tells me he can come in under five hundred. But, you know, I'm not sure, we haven't gone over anything else. So even if we, there's the other article, we could be.
I, I have no issue, I, I have to rely on your professional expertise here, I mean, if you says, this, I mean, the price, when I saw, when I saw the price, I'm like saying, okay, I like the price a lot, but as long as it meets the requirements and has some longevity with the town, it's, I want it to last for several years.
This truck will be ten blushes anyways, I mean, all that.
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty, get twenty out of it. But, I mean, tires are two years old, there's nothing really issue that we could see, at least looking at what we saw today.
Can you tell me how to fund before the seventy-five?
It's on the warrant anymore.
Yeah, it's on the warrant too, because the warrant identifies what's in the capital reserve with the seventy-five thousand dollar deposit.
That was like three sixty-four.
What year is ours now?
What are we, two hundred?
When we're replacing?
Yeah.
Ninety-one.
So there's nothing there we don't have to do with the seventy-five.
We don't have to wait.
No, you have, you need.
Well, another truck's a whole. Five.
So you want to pass over two articles?
Yeah.
Why though?
The one that this is replacing is seventeen years older.
Leave two hundred in there. It's from surplus anyway.
It's in the capital reserve, how much is it now?
It's more than. We'll just put the surplus. I don't think you have a, if you don't.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
Like put a sand or a man.
She doesn't put that. Four forty-three minus seventy-five K. It's like three fifty, three fifty, we have more than enough to pay for it.
Right.
And you're gonna be left with some more dollars in the annual reserve fund.
And what I'm thinking about doing, we can have lots of it on the floor, but we could pay for his employee if that's passed, or put it right towards the bottom line of taxes.
Right, that's what we thought, yeah, so there's fifty-seven thousand that's part of the fire department, or fire truck purchase that will not be used.
Correct.
Will pass over, but the seventy-five thousand that you had put on the article before it.
We could pass over that too.
You could, but then you're looking at maybe leaving two hundred in his capital reserve rather than depleting that and starting from scratch again.
Yeah, well, I want to start from scratch, we'll be twenty years to build it up.
Well, at least ten years.
Well, the other truck's gonna have to be replaced, it's been years probably.
Yeah, we could leave the seventy-five in.
We have ten years, so I want to take that seventy-five thousand, use it to the tax base this year. Yeah, but we were putting a hundred and something.
Hundred forty-four.
So why not leave the seventy-five?
You gotta keep funding that. Capital reserve fund.
Just take every, every dollar out. I, I'd, I'd, you want to leave it?
Leave the first article for his and let it go in his account, and then take the second one up.
And the discussion is, he's got another vehicle upcoming, maybe within how many years?
Oh, you're saying you'll be in ten years to save the most. Yeah, but we're gonna have to replace other vehicles by then.
Command guy.
Part of the C I P was your command day.
He's gonna see an extra cop car, there's all kinds of.
Cop cars aren't any good anymore. They used to be good.
That includes seventy-five thousand.
John's used to good cars.
Four forty-three with seventy-five thousand.
Four forty-three subtract seventy-five. There's still plenty to buy.
Correct, but then it only, it depletes his balance to about a hundred grand.
Yeah, that's fine. We're gonna have ten years to build that back up.
Well, he's gonna, do you know how much the modifications are gonna? I, I, I think we actually have at least ten percent for possible modifications.
I don't know if they'll do it, but if one gets. I mean, I don't know if they'll do it, but when it gets back here, we might need to spend a little more. And I don't know what the, the delivery charge would be to get it delivered. Cause we'd have to buy it, if we don't go down and drive it, you know, they won't, so many deliveries.
We can find a lot up before town meeting.
Should be fairly, should be delivered. Doesn't matter, we have enough in three fifties, more than enough to do his minor modifications and delivery. I think we still should put seventy-five in there. I, I like that, just uh table the discussion for now, and we, we get, I get next meeting to discuss it, let's think about it. Um as far as what we wanna do is, whether we add it to the capital fund, uh reserve fund. But right now, you have enough money in your capital reserve fund to execute. And we, the voters gave us permission to execute last year. And so, I'd say, I'd like to make a motion, we, we uh put the deposit down and purchase the vehicle pending inspection. Ross, second round. Dave?
I'd like to read it first. I know you guys sign everything, I love reading.
Okay, um. You said, all in favor? Get the motion on the table.
I'm not voting yet, let me read it.
Oh, okay, give me a moment.
What are you reading? Spex?
Yeah.
Just the, the contract.
Lee Martell, I think, to be fair, I think we should pay for the delivery. Shouldn't be asking a volunteer to go all the way down to get the truck and bring it back.
Oh, there's no discussion, I don't agree.
That would be fair.
I agree.
Justin already offered.
Me? I had to take it off.
I hope it does too. Typically, how do they, do they put her on a bed or do they?
Fly down and then drive back.
Well, when it comes from the factory, they drive them.
Yeah.
That's pretty happy, the little boy.
Some dealers.
Big little boy.
Yeah, yeah, trailer.
But they have big equipment for that too.
I am discussing.
I was just curious, I was, when you said that, I went.
I, I'm usually a deal of full bed, they don't send the driver up with them, cause there's another be five.
I was gonna say.
If you could just compare how much, how much it's cost. Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Because you, we may have volunteer once we're down there and drive it up if it's like a thousand bucks.
And the guys that are going down tomorrow, tell them they probably will pay for their fuel and tolls.
Absolutely.
Got a problem with that?
No, not a problem with that at all.
Wasn't there enough of a budget to pay a mile away anyways?
No, but they, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna pay my own, I'll just, you know. Well, you can credit them for lunch. Get some eats. They have tolls lunch.
Yeah.
Using their own vehicles, so at least we can do it for them. You know, it's work from going down.
Yeah.
Take a look at it, keep on, there's a amount.
Now, it has eighteen thousand miles, is that, you said that's considered very low?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, I have no basis to compare it to.
Yeah.
How many miles on the old one?
Say again?
How many miles on the old one?
How, question my audience, how many on that one?
They won't know the.
Yeah, right. Did the speedometer turn over, right?
Speedometer.
Hundreds of one eighth.
You know, the speedometer turns every time you pump, so, but it, it shows up as mileage. I would say, I think engine one's in the thirty, forty thousand dollar, uh mile range, uh the one we're getting rid of. And our engine two, which is more, oh that's, that's, I only have seventeen, eighteen on that.
And, and that's an older vehicle.
Yeah.
So it's not state of the art, like this one would be more state of the art than that other one.
The ones we've been looking at online, most of them are in the eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand mile range. A lot of them are areas where they travel a lot too, you know. Get on the highway, enjoy twenty, thirty minutes.
Good, not to delay what you're doing.
Dave, uh wait on Dave anyway. Jeff Rosby, I'm just, what, what do you do with the old one?
Well, we're gonna ask this guy if he wants to buy it.
Oh, okay.
Cause he's a pro, he buys trucks, so we're sending pictures down with it.
Yeah.
Uh I'm hoping that things at least worth twenty thousand.
Oh wow, I didn't, I had no idea with something like that.
Yeah, cause the truck really is pretty good shape, given its age, I mean, it's not, no rust.
Fire road for twenty thousand.
Huh?
I'll buy that to leave on our road.
Yeah, there you go.
Put it in front of your house.
Fire protection.
Plus it's a.
It's a max. Get an insurance break.
A lot of people like to collect max, that's a max, so.
So there is a, a niche.
There's a niche out there.
I mean, it's not gonna win the mega bucks, you're gonna get some bad.
They're gonna ask them tomorrow.
We have, uh, show.
Could be like a secation for it.
Yeah, they're gonna stop down with pictures and what the truck is.
Sorry, I just wanna say thank you for your diligence and, and finding this.
Yeah, I mean, it just happened, it hit right today.
Right place, right time.
We've been looking for a year, couldn't find a vehicle, you know, one that would fit in, and couldn't find a decent mileage, one that was really what we wanted. And this thing just happened to come up today and.
I would, uh, the chairman know, give him a call tomorrow, let them know you got people on the way down.
I've already texted them tonight, cause the, the plan was Saturday, and then they text me, called me tonight, wanted if they could go tomorrow. I said, sure, go tomorrow. Uh I would, might have gone with them on Saturday, but I didn't go tomorrow. Uh so, they wanna go tomorrow, I said, fine, so I called the guy again tonight. So I was late, I've been on the phone with this guy about five, six times today. And he had an appointment tomorrow, he said, what time you think they're coming, I was like, they'll call back, dah dah dah. So they wanna leave a little bit early tomorrow, they won't get there at two o'clock.
Gotcha.
Two or three, and the guy said, that'll be fine, he'll meet on there tomorrow too. Uh so, you know, we'll see what he says, but.
Why don't you give them the check and they'll, they'll reimburse you next week?
Yeah.
Check's in the mail.
I'll have that in my checking account. But, so.
You wanna use one over a new one?
Huh?
You sure you wanna use one over a new one?
Because if, though we're gonna buy used, I mean, new, isn't really the quality of this truck. I mean, this is gonna have so much, we are basically buying a really plain Jane truck for five hundred.
It looks like the deposit's refundable if you guys don't like it anymore for seven days.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, and he's got so many guys that wanna buy it, that's what I told him. We hit down here and, you know, we've already uh scanned to the contract. They're gonna bring, he wanted the original contract to come with him, or at least mail it to him. So, when I talked to him tonight, cause the plan was they're gonna bring a deposit, now they're not gonna bring a deposit, because they're leaving too early. So, that, I said, if we put it in the mail tomorrow, if we get it in the mail tomorrow.
Yes, we can, and we can get it certified overnight air or something.
Be there by Monday.
Yep.
Or two, depending on the, you know, post office.
Larry Kamel, Montegoal Road.
There you go.
Um John, do they offer you rights to the first refusal? Are you assured that you'll go to get the first shot at this if you go down?
Yep.
And if so, is there any way you can do electronic fund transfer if you need the money tomorrow?
All we need tomorrow is the deposit.
Well, that's.
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking, we're getting the deposit fund transfer done through the bank. As opposed to waiting for the bank open, get a certified check, a bad check, and then they're not leaving until ten A M.
Sure, they'll take the pound check, and I'll get the sum.
Yeah, it's a little more complicated with the way the treasurer has the account set up, wiring money.
Usually they have limits on, well, yeah, it's come to be wired, it's different, yeah.
So, and I talked to him tonight, he said, buy mail on Monday or Tuesday, it'll be fine.
Okay, okay.
And then the, the total amounts due on delivery. So, and he says that's probably gonna be forty-five days at least.
One, one nice thing, it doesn't look like they mark up delivery, it's an actual cost of delivery.
Yeah.
So they're not marking it up, that's nice.
Yeah, I'm sure they got it, as they use on original basis.
Right.
Uh cause he, you know, they send trucks all over the country. But he said that used truck bucket now is so hard, you know, when trucks come in like this.
Why don't we buy it, resell it then?
Yeah, why not? But, but he said, it's just, it's ridiculous. You know, because of the price of new ones, like I said, this thing's worth a million too, today, new. That, there's so many people, big cities, little towns, everybody's buying new trucks. One thing you get away from emission engines, you know, pre-emission crap, uh electronics. You know, there's not so many electronics on these little, on these older trucks. Electrical issues, that's what a lot of the new trucks have, electrical issues.
John, I, I salute you for finding this, I, I, I think it's a great motion on the table, you wanna make a vote on it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, we're gonna make the, you got the green light to go ahead and do it.
Perfect.
Voters gave us the green light last year, and so I'd say, uh.
Sign, we'll scan it to John, John will vote it in, and they can bring that with them. What's that?
I don't have those capabilities.
John, if you do.
Well, you have to give me his email, cause you've sent it to me from your phone.
John, if you do, there's a breakdown on delivery, but if not, it looks like we have two people willing to help.
I'd just like to, kind of, one more thing about the delivery, I think it's very wise to have it delivered. Not send anybody after it.
Hampshire buyer.
Cause if anything happens, if you get, if somebody runs into it or something, that would be a very complicated issue.
Or run into some snow and ice.
Whatever, I could be a comp.
I thought of that.
Well, let somebody else be responsible, especially forty-five days, I mean, it's, it's not like it's tomorrow, tomorrow or next week.
If you could give the fuel station, put fuel in it, some dumber backs into the thing, and that could be a nightmare for the town.
Well, the town of Chichester, I actually had a very new truck. Bought and it was being delivered, and uh a woman committed suicide. Stuck dead in the interstate, and they rear ended them at sixty-five miles an hour. And got it all on dash cam. Uh the guy left it, he get hurt, the doors come flying off the truck, ran into this car. The state police in New York had already stopped this woman for some issues, let her go. She goes in the interstate, stops dead in the middle, no lights on or anything. This guy goes night, delivering the truck, pounding door.
Yeah.
Killed her, ruined the truck. Chichester still hasn't got a truck, they can't sell the insurance company. The truck has been impounded, it's sitting in an impound lot at the state police barracks in New York since this happened. Over a year ago, can't buy a truck now for the price that they agreed on with this.
That one was ruined. Now, now you're, I'm convinced we gotta come deliver it night.
And they have nothing, they have nothing, and the truck was on the way to Chichester.
Well, this will start a truck.
Yeah.
John, I have his email, I'll send it to him tonight. It's Glenn, is his name?
Jared is the guy, but that could be the owner.
There's a fax number in the back too, on the bottom, last page.
I'm in nail with Jared, but he's employed, maybe that guy owns it.
That's the owner, our president, so. There's a fa- fax on the, on the back page.
So I'll, I'll have Buddy talk to him.
John, thank you for saving Dunbar's dollars.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal for the town.
That's great. But as Dave, as Dave said, you, you have been devil's advocate, but Dave, Dave's being a good devil's advocate, you losing the new truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As long as you expect this.
But you had already downgraded that truck, don't make it affordable for the town anyway.
Exactly.
But this is an upgraded truck, just a little bit over.
Which.
It's well, it's broken in, broken in.
Wanted, that we're gonna be giving up on the, on the new one, and I think it'll last. Yeah, it'll probably last as long as that, that, that new one would, just because it's that much better built truck. It's safer because these trucks, the custom camp trucks are tested for rollover, have rollover protection and all that stuff. Or a, a commercial truck doesn't have that built in.
For our use in this town, I, I.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it runs, we make a year, uh that truck should last us for all.
But we're growing, you never know.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Good job saving the rest of the mansion there.
Any comments, suggestions?
I do. And the reason we saved the mansion is cause of mutual aid.
Right.
You know, it, we are fortunate that we belong to the Capitol area mutual aid. When Dunbar, any structural fire, reported fire in town Dunbar, gets automatic mutual aid. So that means as soon as Dunbar was toned, Conkett was toned, Bow was toned, Ware was toned. So those trucks are on the road, cause they're all full time, before I even leave my driveway, those guys are signing on the air. So we have to get to the station, put our gear on, get the truck, drive to the scene. That Conkett engine, maybe two minutes behind our engine, with five firefighters, they send two. On the ambulance, three on the engine, they send their battalion chief, then when the tower came, they sent five more on the tower.
Wow.
So we had eleven Conkett firefighters there.
This is on Major Road?
Yeah, right on, all interior structural firefighters.
Why do we even take our trucks out?
Right, and that's half of the force, that's half of Conkett's on duty force, in Dunbar. Plus five out of Goss Town, three out of Ware, three out of Bow, you know, and our guys. And, you know, all those guys went in, uh we knocked down the outside fire, they went in, you know, interior. Worked on the thing, and, you know, I've talked to a lot of veteran guys down there, some guys I worked with, they, when they all got there, I said, there's no way. We're saving this place, you know, it's just kinda, you know, two hundred forty year old house.
It looks like all the beams got saved.
Yeah, the interior, I mean, the structure's down. You know, a little bit of the roof on the rear, but inside, that's severe heat, smoke, but there's no structural damage. In the main house or the out.
Yeah, that's huge.
So, I mean, you know, it's, it's got old finishes, cause it's old.
I heard this week, the dog came home too.
Dog came home. They were more concerned about the dog than whatever the house, really. She said, four little girls, they're all bawling for the dog. And.
I heard she was just scared in the woods.
Yeah, the dog was skittish anyways, even to the family. The dog always ran into its cage, even in the house when somebody came or something. They all, but I feel bad for the, there were two occupants in the house, the rest are out to suffer. Two elderly people, we, we've been picking a woman up, struggling on medicals, but anyways. Uh the neighbor on Caleb's Way, he reported the fire first, he was sitting on his couch. Uh heard some popping, get up, looked out his window, could see the fire. He called nine one one, that was the first nine one one call, ran over there. Walked in and they were still in the house, him and her, and they were trying to get the dog into the cage. So the old guy got the dog into the cage, this guy helped the elderly woman out. Went back in, he pulled the cage out with the dog in it, and the old guy came out. They got to the front of the house, and he said, I need my keys to my car, so he could put the dog in the car. He went back in the house, like this guy stayed out. In the meantime, our police officer Cody was there, and Cody Mocker was there. So they went, went back in and brought the guy out. He was in there popping around trying to get his car keys and some meds for her. And the whole back wall of that long living was on fire at that point, with pretty heavy smoke condition when they brought him back out.
Oh my.
And he opened the cage to try to get the dog in this kinda thing bolted. So, he's, obviously felt bad the dog get away, the kids don't want the dog, and uh they were. That guy who called in on uh Caleb's Way, the security cameras stuck in his hat, so, you know, he'd been seeing it every night, during the night. So they knew it was around, but actually Buddy, went by Fri- uh Saturday morning, was on the front lawn. So he got out and tried to coax it, just shoots into the woods, it just runs. And that, they called the company, or a group just created this state recovery people, they put traps out, they can trap dogs and animals. Put that out on Saturday or Sunday, and then.
Monday.
The guy saw it again on his security camera in the morning, called, they're standing at a hotel in Cardiff. They came out, heard the dog barking, it was in the house. So, they'd left the door open in the house to make sure, you know, in case the dog went in, they did, right in the house, barking, so they got the dog back. Always.
Good news story.
Oh, yeah, definitely, you know, they've even lost a dog, they've lost a girl in the tractor, that's a knock.
Stuff can be replaced sometimes, people and animals can learn.
Oh yeah, that's, that's the thing, so, so when I was reviewing fake alert, there was a phone number for nine one one call. So, I wanted to talk to that guy, see what he had, cameras and stuff, see if, show the fire and all that stuff. He's a, he's a Manchester police officer. And uh so, I called this number, I get this old guy. I go, do you live on Caleb's Way? And uh he says, no, I live on Mansion Road, but the house burned. So I go, you lived in, I said, you made a nine one one call? He goes, yeah, I was in the house, and my wife yelled at me, there was a fire, so I called nine one one. I go, really? I said, I didn't know that, so, but he was the second call. And so I called the dispatcher, who came back on duty yesterday, I said, you took the calls for the fire? Yep, took the guy on, on Caleb's Way and then some other guy called, I think he was a neighbor. I go, no.
He was the occupant.
He was the guy, an occupant. He says, guy didn't tell me that, he says, he was cool as a cucumber. He was in the house when he made the call. So, I mean, he'd get bits and pieces, uh, but.
Thank you to the crew, you know, we were really, really appreciative.
Yeah, it, it really was a fortunate thing we stopped it, what we did, you know, I mean, but, uh, everything worked out, that worked out, we had good water supply, now right there on Winkle. Uh, so, sometimes it goes good, but.
Oh, we could now sorry, end of the day.
Pretty well, so hopefully they'll be able to rebuild, I mean, if there's no structural damage, they'll be able to, you know. House don't have to be, you know, cut it out and.
Sure.
Wiring and stuff, but they can preserve the floors still look good, those may have all wooden floors, maybe there was some water there.
If you would, uh, send a, uh, for Saturday, let us know how the crew makes out Saturday, so we can know, like, our curiosity, we can't wait two weeks, we wanna know like Monday or hours ago. After the inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if it goes forward, um, basically if it said, green, green light, you're gonna buy it.
Oh yeah.
If your inspection goes through.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we just gotta make arrangements to make, cut the check for him, okay?
Just let us know what the delivery is.
I'll still work on that tomorrow, so we can, we can get out the mail tomorrow and they'll get it out.
We'll make a motion on the delivery amount.
The deposit, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I called them before I came, and the guy said, call me anytime, I go, okay, so I called them tonight, seven o'clock. And I said, uh, you know, I'm going to meet tonight and, you know, they won't be delivering the check on Saturday like I told you a couple hours ago. Because they're gonna leave at a different time. And, uh, he said, no problem getting it in the mail, you know, Monday, Tuesday, so.
Yeah, we'll get out, well, I'll wait to hear about your inspection and then put it in the mail. If you go forward with that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because he could drop it off on us, it could be dropped in the mail Saturday evening.
Yeah.
No, Friday evening, sure, it'll go tomorrow, Friday evening.
Yeah, Friday. Yeah, we'll get it out tomorrow as long as we get a call from the guys that it's, it's all set to go.
Lee, can you put a copy of that personally?
Well, you can say, don't, I mean, we can embrace that contract.
Basket for the town.
Yep, I just scanned it, so.
I'll call him in the morning again.
Okay.
And see, uh, yeah, I can get a copy of that tonight, Buddy can pick it up before he leaves in the mail, the contract.
I just scanned it, you want this copy?
Yeah.
Mike?
He said he wanted a.
Let's make a photo.
Fats, he wants.
Give him the original, make us a photo.
Yeah, because he wanted their, the signed original.
The deposit is refundable anyway, deposit is refundable anyway, right?
Yeah.
Either in the mail.
Yeah, okay, this with the.
So it can be sent out?
I'm not worried about the, yes.
Can be sent out anyway.
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, because girls won't make it till tomorrow, you know.
Hmm?
The girls won't make the check till tomorrow.
No, I understand, I'm saying, they don't have to wait till they get the okay.
Yeah, but.
You can get it.
Time would work by the time you get down there, it's two and a half.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, just get it out there and it's, it's out front of the body.
Sign the contract, give them a check by Friday.
Can't lose it.
So no, and I've got, uh, okay.
Yeah.
And even then, they could still.
Right, but I mean.
Just give you time.
Jeff, when are you going next?
They give them the checks right away, they can get it back if they say no.
I do. They gotta, why don't I see that, uh, pricing that?
That would take thirty minutes to get back.
Dave reading, yeah, I wanna take time out of reading, read for it. What is it, paving prices?
Jeff got a lower price for his truck too.
I'll call him in the morning.
He got a lower price for his truck too.
See if he can wait.
That would be long if they. You know, it's, it's someone texted me, uh, this week, some guy I don't even know, and it was a green truck.
Oh, so there you go.
Like green Western Star with a highway plow on it and a, and a wing plow, and I thought I was one of the salesmen. You would, oh really? I'm like, I'm like, oh, nice truck though, he goes, oh, sorry, you're wrong, Justin, I'm like, I don't even know who the guy is. I go, maybe Jeff was down there and he was sending it to me.
No, I have no idea.
Do we have last year's numbers on the paving?
Well, I can explain it to you. Would you like me to?
Please.
Last year, when we started the paving season, the price at that point in time was eighty-five dollars a ton, which is all based on liquid asphalt charge. And all the pavers have a clause in their contracts that say it's based on liquid asphalt price. If liquid asphalt goes up, this is a state accepted policy, they go up on the price of the asphalt per ton, offset that price. Well, at the beginning of the year, when we first started paving season last year, it was eighty-five, but it actually went down, so they credited us the lower price down to seventy-eight. That's where we came in the last two pavings, we paved Montalor and, um.
You. So your money left in your budget?
Well, a little. No, we spent all the money, that was.
Well, how'd you spend the money if you're paving?
That's the, that's part of the reason I was able to do a little more paving on Putney Road was because the lip, the price of asphalt had come down. So basically, he indexed it in at that price we paid last year, every year. And again, that liquid asphalt number still, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, it was the right thing to do, I mean, but wouldn't have probably known. It could go up in those too. Yeah, it could go up.
Is this shimmy from the edge of the road here? I don't see it. Bobcat trimmer, is that what that is?
No, that's a bobcat trimmer, that's for trimming the joints and stuff.
Joints on driveways? Is it gonna meet up? Nothing for doing the edges.
We hire that separately, he charges us a rental rate for the machine and the crew that comes with it, with a roller, broom and all that stuff. And it was like two thousand dollars a day for that last year, and then so much rental for the truck, and then we buy the driver. And that's a variable, because it depends on how shoulder, what we have to do. We're not talking a lot of paving this year. No, we're not, we're really scaled back this year. And they've given us good service, they're good to work with, we've used them about fifteen years, every time we have put it out for bid, they're always the lowest one. We did put it out to bid when we did the bond, just to, you know, it's like, we do a large amount of work.
So I'll make a motion to accept the paving bid, uh, from January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, for advanced excavation paving for the twenty twenty-four paving season. For the highway part.
One second, and the discussion, I just wanna make sure that it's a, it's an estimate, because it can go up, it will go down.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, uh, any other further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I've actually, given everything that's going on in the world today in the Middle East, I'm kinda surprised that fuel prices have been stable again.
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff, um, because it's been such a warm winter throughout the whole country, there's an abundance of natural gas. Which natural gas, keeping oil prices down, keeping gas prices down.
No, I, I agree, it's, it's been a bit of a surprise, so it's hard work in the area. All right, that's part one, can I talk about part two?
Yes.
Now we get that done, road postings. Yes, that time of year. Did you read social media? No. Oh, I just thought, someone, someone made a comment on social media that road postings mean nothing in this town. Well, I believe that, some people don't pay any attention to them. No, I think, they were commenting on, um, on heavy trucks and the things, it's just a, it's just a, uh, they, they were paying lip, lip service. Anyway, as you know, every time, this time of year we do it, it's usually a bearable, depending on the weather. And looking at the extended forecast and our, everything, I picked the date of March fourth.
Which is a Monday.
Which is a Monday.
It's coming Monday?
No, a week from Monday. Looking at the forecast for next week, it actually is gonna come off kinda warm at the end of next week. So either the end of next week or March fourth. Donna has already sent all the contractors, uh, have building permits out in town, a notification laying out that we were gonna be doing that. Tentatively, we had figured March fourth, depending on the weather.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Are there any roads that the builders are still allowed to go down, like roads that haven't been completed yet, like the golf course or any of them?
Nope.
So that's all a hundred percent done, bond?
That's totally, yep. That one's got two coats of pavement on, totally done, there's no bond in place on it anymore.
Okay.
And even last year, when it was, wasn't a hundred percent finished with the top coat, Robert Pike, the developer, really wanted us to put the road postings on, he's a firm believer in that itself. Can you answer your question, Senator?
I had a, I had a client from down there ask today, I think they talked with Donna about, just like you said. They have a delivery, you gotta schedule things out weeks now, because it's the way it is at the economy. But they have a delivery going for drywall for an entire house on the fourth. Are you, you're posting during the day as the fourth and up on batch on down?
Yeah, he could call me today, but he didn't leave a message, that's what I called.
That's what I'm talking about.
Um, yeah, but she, I don't know, you know, I hate.
You're posting on the fourth.
Yep, I don't know if it's gonna be cold in that morning or not, but, uh, they've been working on that house for nine months, why is it my problem now?
Well, it's not just, it's the time that they can get the drywall that's ready for it.
Why can't they have a delivery Friday or next week?
Typically, they'll load till you're ready, till your inspections and everything are done.
Oh, so it is them.
I don't know if they're fault, but it's the timing of the job.
Well, I mean. Facebook says we don't have that any or something.
I'd say, uh.
Facebook says non-issue.
Non-issue, yeah.
Hey, why, uh, they, why do they?
But you're posting on the fourth, that's okay to deliver that day or not?
Why do they feel it's necessary to call the slaughter?
No, their only question was, is it okay to deliver that day or not?
How'd you find out about it?
They called me when they, you wouldn't answer your phone.
You gotta tell your client, when he calls, the best thing for him to do, if I don't answer the phone, is to leave a message.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
Then I, then I will call back.
All right.
And then he has his wife call later and it was like two or thirty when I read the message, so I hadn't called him back. The, the only thing I ask is when you get the firm date of, if it's March fourth. Yeah. Coordinate with the police department so they know exactly what's going on. Yeah, no, Donna will tell everybody.
And you've allowed someone cold, cold days before to go out?
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, if you look at the weather forecast next week, it's gonna be above freezing every night.
Yeah, but it's always you, uh, like I've done in the past, I've asked for exceptions if I've made it on the road, if it's cold.
Yeah, if it's cold, cold day, that's what I'm saying.
You have to call you like the night before, it's not, it's not a like week ahead decision.
Kind of coming from the audience?
Well, I mean, I understand what Dave's saying, but then if you let one do it, you shouldn't let everybody do it.
Yeah, that's what happens.
No, I wasn't saying that, he's posting on the fourth, is the fourth okay to?
Well, if the sign's not up, I guess it's okay.
Yeah.
But if the sign's up, it shouldn't be okay.
That's what I was asking, is the fourth gonna be okay or not?
As I know, if it's not above freezing, not morning.
You have to sign it up.
I can't tell you, I can only go on the information, we have to pick a date, and like I said, Donna was gracious enough to reach out to all these contractors. And let them know what our scheduled tentative was.
Which is nice.
So they could, so they could plan around.
I think that's a very good courtesy.
Oh, I think it is still, it's a good thing to do. Okay. You wanna hear, uh, we have something else, we're gonna draft, we're gonna talk about that next, because we got him here, we can.
Uh, might as well just go to the sixth thing on town business, because he's kind of part of that too.
We got a, a regulation recommendation from the planning board concerning driveway cuts, is that, is that correct?
No, driveway regulations.
Driveway regulations.
Well, that too, but.
Well, they asked for a joint meeting, it looks like, right?
Yeah, he went on the wrong one.
That's, that's, you're talking two separate issues.
Six, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Number six is a planning board joint meeting.
The number six is.
So they, they requested a joint meeting?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let Justin speak on it, he has the.
Yeah, Justin, go ahead.
Uh, so last night at planning board meeting, we had a, uh, resident come in for our three lot subdivision. And it's, part of that is extending the current class six road. And there was some current concerns brought up by the board about what the procedure is to upgrade that to a class five road. Um, and how much is, how much and what is gonna be required of the applicant? I know Jeff had made some comments in regards that there is some things that we already have in place for that, so I guess we need clarification on what we need to do.
But we have, we've made a selectman's policy for class six roads that need to be upgraded.
That's only for building on a lot of record on a class six road without class five frontage, that's the selectman's policy. This is a lot of record that has class five frontage. And then is dividing that existing lot into three lots, which the new, two new lots will be on class six frontage. So now this falls under the realm of the planning board to make sure that they bring that class six section up to class five standards. By the subdivision regulations, not by the selectman's regulations.
Mm-hmm.
In my understanding.
And then we're gonna be in the same situation of we're gonna have to figure out how we get that section, a section of land to make a new turnaround. Where the class five section is gonna be continued, because like, because it stops at the, where the second lot is proposed. And it would now have to be at the end of that lot with the third lot.
It's similar to the procedure that we went through with, on the other side of Gini Road, when we, uh, were looking at.
No, it wasn't subdivision, he was asking.
Yes.
No.
That was a lot of record.
Lot of records built.
Lot of record, but there was still a requirement to have a turnaround. In the past, the planning board has had some requirements that they put out there for road improvements. For it to become an accepted class five road. The most recent one that was done was Purgatory Pond Road. And Brian Odl was the gentleman, he actually got a petition, brought that before the voters at a town meeting. And it was voted on that if he did X, Y, Z improvements, the town would take it over as a class five road. Everybody was on board with that, that was no subdivision, he just wanted the road taken over as a class five road. And he built it exactly to our class five road standards, like it was a brand new subdivision, you know. Whatever feet of gravel, twenty-eight feet of gravel, ditches, culverts and all that, he did an excellent job with it. Following that, after he got that phase of it done, he brought it in and then he did a subdivision on it. So he did it a little differently, this is a subdivision that ties into, the only way they can do the subdivision if it's brought up to class five standards. Um, one before that was Louis Chan on Guile Hill Road, he was a similar situation, and that was back like two thousand and five, roughly, somewhere in that vintage. He did the same thing, he had some requirements that were required by him to bring that road up to a certain standard. And it was agreed on between the conservation commission, the planning board, and I think the selectman's office also had a finger in it. It's been quite a while ago, twenty plus years now.
And that's where, that's where the joint meeting?
Yes, and I think that's what the idea.
Always when a class five or gets, or class six gets brought to a class five, selectmen are typically involved.
Yes.
For the sidewalk and whatnot.
Not just sidewalk, it's for the final approval.
Anyway.
Acceptance, yeah, because the selectmen have control of the roads. Even though it goes through the planning board.
And then, as Justin pointed out about the turnaround, we learned on the Gini subdivision, which was a class five road that was having improvements done on through an exaction fee and something else. We were requiring the applicant to give us some land to make a turnaround, well, the current town attorney we have now says we can't do it that way.
And you can't make the subdivision contingent apply them, they have this land.
Yes, we, you can't make somebody give you land, you can get an easement, so the legal part of it, I'm not sure.
Well, one thing is, they are creating two new lots.
They are creating, and they realize that, and they realize.
So when they're creating the new lots, just like a normal subdivision, the turnaround should be part of it, right? Oh, Donna created the lots too, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean, according to the town attorney that we're using now, his opinion has changed since previous attorneys. And I don't know, I don't know what's right or wrong, I really don't.
Sure, and whatever we require, we should make it enough so we can do a turnaround, like a round, a roundabout, if we ever desire to. Yeah, but leave us enough room that, you know, twenty years down the road if they want to do a roundabout.
Jeff, did the chance give us a ninety-nine year easement on their turnaround?
They just put it on the plan and said, here's your term.
Okay.
Put a fifty-five by fifty box on there and that's the term.
So we don't own it, we just, it's shown on the line?
I, I have no, I have no idea.
I don't think we do.
Life was a simpler than that. They just agreed to do it, there was no argument, they allowed for it on the plan, there's boundaries in. The legal, the legal part of it, I don't know, I can't tell. The next, the next planning board meeting, is that when they're proposing this, this meeting? Yep. Okay, which will be in March, thirty, March?
No, no.
Okay.
So the next point of order was, uh, the joint meeting between the conservation commission, the board of selectmen, um, and I think the road agent.
Yeah, he just wants an input.
Yeah, so they had proposed that, and also basically us coming to the March thirteenth conservation commission, conservation commission meeting, um.
It says, well, joint meeting the twenty-first, uh, pretty first.
That was the, um, George Holt's recommendation, he's not available for the seventh of March, so they are, if they came to the select board meeting, that was, that's your next meeting.
Yeah, that, they were just saying a joint meeting at our, one of ours, they have their own on March thirteenth, when we could meet with them collectively.
Uh, I'm getting lost a little bit here.
I am too.
Do you want the?
He's throwing out two dates.
A joint meeting, why are we having two?
No, either or. Do you wanna go to a conservation meeting or do you want them to come to you?
I like it when they come to us.
And then George agrees with that, even though he's on conservation as well, but if they, twenty, what is it?
Twenty-first, March twenty-first.
Twenty-first is the one.
Because typically, conservation commission meets, then they bring their recommendations to us from how we did in the past.
Okay.
It gives them time to meet and beat it all up amongst themselves, then come to us, you know?
Right.
You're gonna wanna do a walkthrough before that meeting, so you have something to discuss at the meeting?
Well, there was this thing, I was gonna say that.
I was just talking about that, we might have snow and ice at this time of year.
I'd say, that and, uh, George had mentioned meeting first and then doing this, I don't, I don't know what the procedure is, I'm just.
Why don't we just pencil in for the twenty-first?
Okay.
We'll go from there. The conservation commission requires a public meeting because it's the city club, that's why that, that's a caveat to this.
Right.
And they will give some input.
Is, uh, is that the one that drops down like that between the fields, Jeff?
Oh, and actually.
No, if you continue past the stone farm. No, if you continue past the stone farm.
They wanted you there as well.
Where Mike did the development.
Where Mike built that house, a single family house, it's those people that cross.
No, for that meeting.
Sixty acres or something, and they wanna summarize more lots of that area.
Jock's behind you, that's why I'm looking at you.
Sorry, yeah, no, sorry.
They have enough acreage, they have enough property.
Uh, so we're gonna, March twenty-first, so just any correspondence, can you make, can you make sure he's going?
But the caveat is this class six road, and that has to be brought up.
There'll be two lots.
A number of years ago, when that house was built, Ken Swayze owned it on the land. He sold the crosses, but it was a lot of record. So he was required to do some improvements to that road through the selectman's office. Now, at that time, they never had a conservation commission meeting or anything.
I know.
He was just required to do.
It was pretty, pretty fast.
One thing that went, it was twenty-five years ago too, you know, anyway.
We have a plan here and the minutes from yesterday.
So he brought it up to a certain standards, but there was no subdivision there. And that was just to bring the class six up, and I think that Doug paled into what Justin was talking about, whatever the agreement the selectmen had at that time for doing.
Well, the fact that it's a new subdivision, we have more ability to.
New subdivision, that's the, that's the goal of this.
Shows you where the, where the road ends currently and where it needs to go on the proposal.
I didn't, and some of this is just, we're kinda, I don't know what the right way to do it is, but it's like the carts getting to fill the horse and stuff here.
Yeah.
It's a procedure.
I don't think anybody knows what the proper thing is.
And they were kind of, last night, the planning board, some of us had to step down because a couple of them were butters with the owners, and I had done work for the owners and may do this road improvement for them, so I had to accuse myself. So there were four board members on, Justin was on. So I was in the audience, and everything Justin's telling is what I heard. But it would, it got a little confusing because they were kinda looking for the planning board to say, hey, listen, you gotta put X number of feet of gravel in, do this, do this.
They want specifics.
Yeah, unfortunately Donna was absent at last night's meeting, so we didn't have a lot of direction on what the proper steps are, so I think we need to establish what the proper steps are for this.
But there is, there is some stuff in there.
And do you remember our class six policy we developed as a?
Yes, we, we.
We have one.
Yeah, so we have that, that's one thing, kind of.
Yeah, one that we did most recently, or you did, with Everett Road.
I worked with you on that one.
Yeah, Everett and Guinea Road, we tried to do that one.
And Guinea Road, but like Lean had said, Guinea Road was a lot of record. Everett Road is a lot of record, but that was part of the subdivision, when it was subdivided, it was told that they would have to bring it up to some specifications. But that was so many years ago, there were no specs attached to it, it was just a, a term that they used.
Yeah, but we worked, developed minimal spec, we did minimal spec working with.
We've been trying to use, we've been trying to.
Suggested.
Yeah.
So we did have that kind of base offer.
It's basically, it's basically the same thing as that class five road standards, as far as quality of gravel, construction processes. The width is the only thing that changes. Typically, the width is the big deal with the conservation commission, they don't.
Maybe they can treat it out two feet narrow, is what we found on these roads.
Yeah, they don't wanna move the rock walls.
Okay, we have one comment from the audience, I just want to hear.
Well, I, I guess, you guys were discussing earlier about a sidewalk, and I guess it doesn't hurt if you guys feel like going for a walk. Cause it's not a big, it's not a long span of road to look at, so you can take a little walk there and look at it.
Six hundred feet.
Well, like he said, it might be iced up and you can't see walls and whatnot.
Oh, you'll be able to see it, come on, I've been outside all day, and you can see the ground, you can see everything. But anyways, I'm just saying, you could do a sidewalk if you wanted to, it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I understand, point, point taken.
We lived it two years ago at the town meeting.
Anyway, so that's kinda where, it's kinda in a weird situation, it's gonna take some time, and the applicants, I believe from the dialogue last night, they understand that.
Yeah, they understand that, so they're, so between our deliberation, they, um, pushed coming back to the planning board for our
April.
April meeting, yeah, so they're skipping March, so we have enough time to.
To get a plan together?
And, and Jacques can amend the plans.
I know one thing, the, the last lot looks kinda narrow here, but the, somewhere down by that well radius, they'll have to have the turnaround on their lot, not the neighbor's lot.
Exactly. It will be on their property.
Kind of at the end of their lot, I would guess, so.
Somewhere, it'll be on their property.
More, it's more than likely with a lease.
However, we gotta do it to make it.
Make it work. Ease as our, ease as our main.
Yeah, whatever, however we're gonna make it work.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they're, they're fully aware of that, and they would, I don't really see any pushback, they realize it, they just.
Well, I think we'd see it has to be an easement only cause there's not enough frontage there to make it.
No.
If you take that fifty feet out, they lose a lot, basically.
How about a big wide driveway?
Well, no, cause passing driveway looks.
Yeah, we try to avoid turnaround in people's driveways, cause it's problematic.
It seems very easy to work with, I think they'll comply with whatever we want.
Yeah, no, I, they, they're not trying to fight it, they, no, they, they realize.
All right, so we have a tentative meeting.
I'll let all the departments that are involved know the date the board chose, and we'll have them.
It'll be the last item on the agenda, so we can just spend more time talking about it without having to hold people up.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think it's too difficult, it's just.
We just gotta get a, a scheme of maneuver.
Point of order. Point of order.
There's a mail under mailbox.
Okay.
Oh, what are you saying for the driveway?
No.
No, regarding the road agent.
Yeah, while it's here.
Will do the driveway rights too, while he's here too? And, and John's here?
Yes, why don't you talk about that? No action, we, this discussion tonight, there's no action on it.
Yeah, so again, I had a planning board meeting last night. We got a draft of the driveway regulations from a collaboration of Jeff Crosby as our road agent, and John Wiggins as our fire chief. To try and develop some driveway regulations for easy accessibility. Like Jeff has stated, he doesn't really have much to go in people's yards for, he just, um, had the concerns of the right of way. Our town right of way, where people's driveways meet the road, um, and then John had concerns about getting up there with fire apparatus and ambulance stuff for emergencies. So they, we voted last night to, um, bring this to the board of selectmen for adoption as a town policy, is that what it's?
Where would, will, where will it be documented, in the planning board? Or is it just a selectman's policy?
I think it would be in like a subdivision regulation, or tie-in, yeah, I believe that's the.
Subdivision regulation.
I didn't.
Yeah, it would make sense that it would be part of that.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Selectmen have to follow it as well.
Or, it would be available if somebody came in and had a random lot. They, and they would typically go to the building department, I believe, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, well, that's what I don't know, that's why.
And I, and I think if they needed to get a building firm and stuff, whoever's running that building department, Donna or whoever at that time would give them this information, whether this is what you require.
Yes, that's why I didn't know if it went in the subdivision regulations, or if it was just a town subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, yeah, available, at least there.
Building department, in the building department.
Yeah, at least there.
Yeah. I would say, let's review.
Yeah, number two, it says minimum feet from any property line, I didn't think there was a setback on the driveway.
There isn't, there isn't, but we wanna include that because what we've been noticing recently in these most recent subdivisions, people attending that put them right on the property line.
Then you wouldn't have to go in the zoning ordinance, cause the zoning doesn't have.
They, they said no.
It says there's no.
There's no driveway setback, but what, why don't you like them there?
Because we have found that you run into problems, we had a couple of developers on countryside down there, they bury the boundaries with dirt on the slope of their driveways, and pushing snow and stuff, you fall in the end of the driveway, you could be potentially pushing it on to the neighbor's property. And then somebody gets a call here saying, hey, the neighbors, and we thought it would be good to have a little space, something reasonable.
Sure.
Sure. It happened to me. My neighbor, the big house next door.
Yeah.
His driveway is exactly on my property line.
Yeah.
And he put his foam pole between my stake and his driveway, and then they couldn't get, they wanted me to cut my trees down so they could get the line in. I'm not kidding you.
And typically, people like to, they like to dress up near their driveway, plant some stuff.
Well, not these people.
But just, we thought it would be better just to have a little space.
Cause it's something for the driveway.
Like, make the comeback, can we, uh, read this and then make a decision next week?
Yeah, I think we should all review it.
Yeah, hey, you're more than welcome to have some input.
Yeah, no, I, I think we, uh, we take a look at it, see if we can.
Yeah, it was just.
Yeah.
Comp chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. No. I'd like to say Larry Camo, Montalona Road, I'd just like to speak to Jeff's potential for driveway, uh, access. No one wants to take away somebody's ability to use their land, but as lots are going to become smaller through the push for more compact housing. The big issue you'll probably have is drainage, when people start pushing water to their neighbors. If you got two driveways side by side, you can have issues with water flow, water drainage, the snow plowing. And, uh, so it's understandable that you will probably have to address that. As long as the setback is reasonable.
A buffer seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, enough for drainage, snow.
Fifteen feet's not that large.
No, we, we thought it was reasonable.
Yeah, agreed, point noted.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're, but, and then the thing is, and John had quite a bit of input, because he runs into the driveways, and as Larry just said, as the lots get more challenging and people get more creative, we're running into these driveways and a longer, and they're grades steeper and all that, so we put a grade provision in there, and again, tried to address John's concerns to get, you know, fire trucks and and the guys up there, they gotta go for a rescue car or whatever. The highway department, once it leaves the road, I personally don't care what they do with it.
The only thing, maximum amount of, amount of grade is ten percent, I would not meet that at this point.
Yeah, I don't know what yours is, but.
It's just uphill.
We wrangled that back and forth, and that, that is.
That's tough.
Donna reached out to a lot of other towns and got their requirements, and that mirrors a lot, that percentage is not an ideal.
No, they're a home for sale right on, uh, on thirteen, I mean, it goes just up.
Yeah. You know.
No, I, I, I hear, so let's, let's review this.
I think we just need to review it, so we can just generate some questions, and.
Read it.
Thank you, Jeff, I need to bring it back when I.
Yeah, it's not a big deal, we've been talking about it for years, and finally got it done and got it before the planning board and brought it to you guys.
And we are one of the few towns that doesn't have a proper regulation.
Yeah, we may have one shortly.
And builders know that, and they come in and build crazy stupid driveways that, you know, if we ever put a fire truck or an ambulance off the side of somebody's driveway you're gonna completely either hurt somebody or total a vehicle, I mean, it's getting to be pretty extreme right now on some of these driveways.
Okay, thank you for getting your input here, then, that's good, then. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll address that next meeting. All right, one more item for you?
Sure.
This is, um, I thought we addressed this last time, uh, this is, um, uh, um.
A new, a new.
Thought it was a new one.
It's a new one.
It is.
I suppose you, you used, um, my Guyney's property turnaround, and did you get the message from the Lean?
He did.
Okay, I don't.
I got no idea.
Okay.
I got nothing.
Okay.
I have no idea if that's left over from the first, did you respond to the first one?
That's, I, I. Yes, we did, Lean did.
I was acquainted.
No, no, you didn't, you didn't direct me to do anything.
So. Maybe it's left over from that, I have no idea.
I, I thought you were gonna call him.
I, I don't know. But I did mention this before, and I will mention it to you again.
I responded with what he told me, he said it wasn't acceptable, that's why I thought this was a new one, I did.
No, it might be, I don't know.
Okay.
And I'm unaware of it.
Who said it wasn't acceptable?
Mike Guyney responded to me saying it wasn't, my answer was not acceptable.
So that's, so that's not a new one, then.
It's not a new one?
It would be the same one if he said it's not acceptable.
Right.
He just re-complaining.
Right, because I thought you addressed it well with when I talked to you last.
That's exactly what happened, then.
Yeah.
And like I told you that night, when does it become harassment?
I, I think it may be harassment, so, but the thing is, as public officials, we're gonna be under scrutiny all the time.
Yeah, but that works both ways.
Uh, true.
We don't need to be harassed, like I'm harassing you, you don't need.
I would, I would say if we did respond to the first one, we don't need to respond to this.
Exactly.
Okay.
The thing is, uh.
I have no idea.
Your explanation last time was more than adequate.
I, I just, if I ask them, is this a new complaint or an old, a follow-up?
You're gonna get another email.
Exactly, it's just.
I would say not respond to this.
Let it die.
I think it's a, it's, it's the old one.
It's a, it's a, and we addressed that.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I'm putting it to bed at this point.
I, I haven't been down yet.
He can always come back if he thinks he wants another response from us, but.
Well, he, he can see the minutes and, and view of that, but the thing is, you gave a more than adequate explanation to me, and I, I thought was, uh, perfectly legitimate with, with the travel. You traveled on a public access road.
Yes.
So I should say, right of way, public access right of way, not a road.
And I don't know, I can't answer this, cause I have no idea.
Okay. I'm all set, there's no, no further action, I, I put you on the enough, said, did I harass you enough tonight?
That's fine, that's fine. No, that's fine, that's fine. I'm harassing you.
No, but the thing is, uh, I, I was, in fact, I had a discussion with the police chief, and we were laughing a little bit. When, when, the thing is, we should, as public officials, we should expect to be harassed, especially elected officials. And that goes with the territory.
I just wanna add one more thing, not to make you go any later than you have to, but it's good for you, you only meet every other week, so bonding.
Oh.
I was, went to the fire that John's talking about, the mansion, to do some sanding.
Yeah.
I was very impressed with the number of fire trucks and manpower there, it was very impressive to see that, it was pretty interesting.
John was, tell us who was out there, you got a lot of people.
There were a lot of trucks there, and a lot of people there, and they were all doing their thing.
Were there any plow truck drivers or nothing while you were there?
Nope, nope, nope. It was, it was pretty cool to see that.
Jeff is excellent, anytime I call Jeff for sand, he is right there, or road barriers, and puts down, he protects us all the time when his, when his ice road out there. He's never not come out.
But we, we need to see all those.
Thank you, Paul, if you guys want a hug.
All, really, that, you playing all the towns there, I mean, there were a lot of towns there, trucks.
It was both ways, most appropriately.
We're not hugging you guys. I'm not hugging you. Do upgrading, all right, thank you guys, see ya.
All right, thank you guys. All right, uh, I'm gonna continue with mailbox side, I didn't start it.
When you ended it.
I was plumbing issues, plumbing issues, I had an update, was that?
Okay, there, there was an email from Mary Gerard, we were having problems with the toilet, it's not flushable.
They just make it as the.
Right.
Ruby, Ruby did?
Plumber went out.
Okay.
Did he fix it?
Yep, there was a bend in the pipe that was making a proper itch or something, and it was resulting, and it's tied into the library.
I thought I had one.
Yeah.
I think they can just take a picture and make it.
So.
Was it a toolwork?
I think it's the, no, it was the new one that was bent, but it, because it was tied into the old one, it was backing up.
They corrected it.
They fixed it, they replaced it.
And then the other thing she was concerned about, the heat.
Oh, yeah, she had a call.
They said, they said they need a fitting, something that will need to be ordered.
Oh, it's not the incident?
Just so as you know, they stopped by, I was here on two fourteen twenty-four to look at the new entry toilet issues. In the end, they said they need a fitting, something that will need to be ordered, they will call and come back. In the meantime, they recommend just light paper in the toilets. They did look at the float in the tank and the toilet flusher and made some adjustments. Evidently, the floating is connected to the library's sink, so they recommend that we use water and not sink off.
It keeps the gases down and the smell.
Okay. Maybe there's also a thing about, is it, is it hot in there?
Yeah.
No.
So, and on Tuesday, two thirteen twenty-four, I arrived to work and there was no heat in the library. I called JR and they came over, something needed to be replaced on the furnace, they had the part, replaced it and the heat came back up. Thanks.
So that's a bill you wanna be getting. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Next item, we got uh, cleaning services for the police department. Okay.
Same company?
Yes, and it's pretty much the same fee, unfortunately, they came to me after our public hearing. Um, because they decided they no longer wanted to do it in-house with staff in that department. There's two quotes there.
Oh, that we're using their staff to do it.
Yeah, they were just using office people to do that.
Okay, two quotes, I have.
Well, the, two options.
Right, okay.
If they can piggyback to our schedule, it would be the same hundred dollar a week. Um, if they have to come back on another schedule, they would have to charge a hundred and twenty dollars because it's another return round trip for them.
I would say they're gonna piggyback to ours then.
If they can, if they can because of access, right?
The issue is that the police department does, isn't staffed at the time that they're here on Fridays to um.
Where is everybody? We have six full timers.
Well, we have police officers that, that leave the building and they can't leave cleaning crew in the building because of confidentiality.
Is this coming out of their budget anyway, so we don't care?
Wouldn't be, it would be coming out of our budget.
How were they paying for it before?
They weren't, they were doing it in-house.
They're paying their staff.
Well, the secretary would flush, wash toilets and pick up trash and vacuum.
Hours, right?
Well, it's in her, would be during her regular hours.
The only thing is, this is a ninth hour, budget's been approved and it's adding, it's, what, what's this crap at the last minute, I'm sorry.
So my, so, so obviously we're already in the third month, almost the third month of the year. But my budget right now, I have a thousand dollars extra budgeted just for quarterly or other special kind of cleaning. And I don't know.
Yeah, because we put that kind of as a placeholder for up in the town.
Right.
You know, if they have a big event up there, we need it.
Yep.
And so now to get that budget in there, is it weekly or monthly?
They're saying weekly, I don't, I wonder.
Twenty a week?
I, I've got a call into Linda to ask her if they really need it weekly, or if it's something they could do bi-weekly, or. It's a month.
If it's weekly, I think it has to come out of his line budget somehow. You know, there's different areas in their budget they can fudge around.
Why did this have to wait till the nth hour to put it in, we've approved our budget, we did a public hearing, now we're changing the budget again.
I don't think we should, I think we should let him make room in his budget this year.
Yeah.
And next year, we'll appropriate it in ours.
Or he can keep it in his, or he'll just.
Or he can keep doing it. As part of their work hours or whatever, you know? Just so it's thought through, you know?
But this is a last minute item, I, that's be my only criticism.
I would say just um, use his budget line for it.
Yeah, I think as, uh, I'm, I'm sure that what they're finding is because they're fully staffed now, you have all those people. Whereas before, if you had three or four officers, the volume of dirt and vacuuming and trash removal, probably less.
I like your, I like your idea of every other week and that way they keep costs down.
Right.
Let it absorb it within their budget and then.
And then next year, will we address it, put it as all of our cleaning is.
Okay.
Because you know, if, say the transfer station brought this, we tell them to use the line out of his budget to fund it this year.
Right.
You know, we.
Yeah.
And my only criticism is, where was it, why, why the thought, act the thought now? It's late in the year.
They probably just had somebody saying they can't do it anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's bad speed.
Alright, I'll discuss it with her and they can deal with, bring it to the board next year for the budget.
Okay, we have a audit report. Let's talk about this, Lene, and we'll let you talk about this.
Um, that's basically the annual uh, financial statement that the um. Final audit produces for the board to review and at this point, we'll probably um, reach out to them for an exit conference. To go over the.
The results.
The results of the, of, and it's pretty much in that summary page that's inserted in the top. But uh, every, we've missed a couple of years of uh, exit interviews, only because of COVID.
Summaries.
Yeah, we did, um, and I know the board is, knows where to look for the fund balance and whatnot and it's primarily listed in that. Financial five thirty-five document that they adjust in uh, for the October tax rate setting. So um, this is just the overall numbers of our, of our.
Were there any big um.
Yes, he took the, he took the following.
Day flag for you?
No, well, I have your typical um, adjustments because by the way of our, our system is set up. Um, they would prefer to move those funds into a, a different account. So there's transactions that I have to make, but it's nothing that is, that um.
Read that if you would allow, that'd be great. I think the one, one sentence says it all.
Key audit matters, we have determined that there are no key audit matters to consider.
There's always room for improvement, so.
And they, they have some recommended improvements, but.
And that's the purpose of us hiring a CPA to work with us, so that we can re- restructure our accounts and um. Hopefully improve on.
I know they highlighted a couple of areas last year.
Yeah.
That we can work on.
Yeah. And now that I have a solid uh, staff in my office, I'm hoping that we can move forward in that direction, so.
The fact that you're working solid on a, on a monthly basis, it's even better.
Yeah, it's very nice.
But I, I much find it to worry the past.
Yeah.
It gives us no time to fudge anything, huh?
Cut that one. Um, that's all I have, one last public comment, Leo. Thank you for your comments earlier, well, well, we see, same to you, sir, thank you for your comments.
No problem.
Any comments, open comments?
No, it's a pleasure to see you guys uh, do your work on behalf of the town. This is your main job is to make sure the financial last end of it is, is uh, taken care of and you do that very well.
Thank you, and I think there's no one else behind you?
Everyone else is left.
Okay.
All this is left.
Lene puts a lot of numbers together for us to look at, that's why. And all the background work.
Okay, uh, to you, Lene, we'll bring it back to the board.
I have nothing right now.
Okay. I have nothing this week, Mike.
Give me a break.
Huh?
Give me a break, you always have something.
I got something, no, next, next meeting could be my financial last meeting, so I want a big party planned.
Okay.
Hey, don't be so hopeful.
You can only wish, right?
Hey, let the other guy throw the party when he throws it off.
There you go. No, but the thing is, I am a pro election and the thing is, I'm not exterring, but the thing is, uh, I'm just, uh, I hope they win another term, if I don't, I don't. I would go with the, the vote as well, I'll be good at that. Okay, well, you never know.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, um, I have nothing, nothing to the group, except uh, um.